Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting. Thank everyone again for our special board meeting that we had. It's 7:00 PM. I'd like to call us to order on Thursday, September 22. Sean, can we get a roll call, please?
Sure. Dean Serwin.
Present.
Bianca Richards.
Present.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, excuse. Our council liaison, Dana Mahmood, was unable to join us. So, our first item on our agenda is for public comment. I had expected some people today. Sean, do we have anyone online?
We do not.
Okay. Do we have any cards?
We do not.
All right, well. Our next order of business is to review and approve the minutes of the special library board trustee's meeting on August 11, 2022.
May I ask a question? Um, I thought that during that meeting, we had asked to put on tonight's agenda, the library and library park health and safety agenda item. I don't see it in the minutes that we asked for that in response to the public comment, but I don't know if I don't remember the dates or I just don't see it in the minutes.
It would have been, we took an action. I mean, we actually moved.
Maybe I'm missing it, too.
That's the regular meeting minutes. Policy review. Sean, do you have any? I don't see it either. So I guess we will have to go back.
It might be in the regular minutes. Are you talking about the request that came after communications?
Oh, there it is. Motion by the library board to add a discussion. So it's number nine. It's after number nine. Between nine and 10. So it's there.
And that's on the regular meeting minutes, not the special.
Right.
It's page four of the minutes from the regular meeting.
Okay, yeah, thank you. That's all I was wondering.
I'll come back to a question after we looked at this. So we have the the recommendation is to approve the minutes of the special meeting on August 11. Do we have any discussion, comment, question? Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I view that we approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 11.
I'll second it, just for kids and regals. Sean, can we get a roll call?
Sure. Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Manny Chang Long.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Annie for pointing that out because it was something we needed to pass. Item three, minutes of the regular library board trustee's meeting of August 11, 2022, which is where the issue that's going to get pointed at is covered as item nine. Do we have any questions, comments, or discussion about these minutes were somewhat more extensive?
I move to approve the regular minutes of the August 11 meeting.
I'll second. Sean, can we get a vote, please?
Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Thank you.
The device does not know how to spell my name. Or Sean. I have a quick question. Didn't we have a special meeting?
We did, but we haven't had time to write up. Well, Sean has drafted the minutes, but I haven't had time to renew them or review them. So we'll have to approve those at the next meeting.
I'm fine with that. It's September and September, so that's fine.
We're usually always.
Yeah. Agreed.
Yeah.
We have a public corner for this minutes for public comment, but I guess he's here to talk about that item. We're on the agenda. Yeah, we're hearing the gentleman. Okay, so if you want to just kind of see, once we get to that, you can come up and sit here and I don't know, we're almost there.
Yeah. Okay, so we have now moving on to item four, library and library park health and safety. Is that what you come to make public comment on? Yeah. Okay, great. So this is where we'd ask for public comment on this agenda item. So if you care to come up and introduce yourself. We got, we did make a bargaining with ourselves. We are going to appear in three minutes. So we have to go a little longer.
Okay, am I the only one making comment then?
Yeah, I think you are.
Okay. So if you care to.
Say your name.
Yeah. 1104, Fairview Avenue, across the street.
Welcome.
Yeah. So I thought that item number four was about the outside. So I've been concerned, we had a meeting a year ago, almost October of last year about this situation with the homeless out there. Some people in particular, but and I'd like to know what's happened. I mean, I know that Carol Loomin is gone, but that doesn't seem to have anything to do with any of the efforts here. It just seems like too progressive. So I'm still concerned about what is actually being done by the library to deal with and hitting the other to deal with the situation with people hanging out in front of the library. Obviously, people can hang out for a while, but to avoid having another situation come up. So for example, there's a sign on the north side of the building that seems to clearly say a bunch of rules. And obviously, there's a bunch of rules in these buildings. I still don't understand why there's no rules on the south side of the building. That don't apply to anybody in particular, but just anybody. And it just seems like this is the opportunity, now that that person is gone, to actually start to address that and put some rules there about put some rules, get some rules enforced in terms of length of hours sitting there. The water fountain not being a place where you may brush your teeth, stuff like that. And any other sort of noxious thing like painting and stuff like that has occurred, sleeping, those kinds of things. For assembly. So as somebody who lives right across the street from this, and the whole thing that are gone, I would like to see, I'd like to know what has actually been done in the last 11 months by the library and the police, because that's who met with, we actually need to address this issue.
Thank you for your time. I was going to tie all these.
Yeah.
Okay, great. We're going to discuss this item. You're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead, sit back there.
Why don't you give Mr. Zingman a copy of the because, yeah, because there's a staff report in there that has some information that would be.
Okay, so what we would like to do now is move to the agenda. Where we have that staff. Here we go. Item number four. Do I read this in the record?
No, I think I can just speak a little bit, and I'd like to, first of all, welcome Shannon Robledo, Lieutenant Shannon Robledo, from our police department, who's here with us tonight. Very grateful for him taking the time out of his evening to be here and help us with this discussion. The staff report, the purpose of the staff report was just to give some context and background on some of the issues that relate to library, park, and library kind of health and safety issues. Certainly, it's not comprehensive. It doesn't cover everything, but for example, the question of signage is addressed here, and hopefully you guys have had a chance to read this, but the purpose is sort of to remind everybody what our values are, what our vision is, what our purpose is, and then to look at some of these issues in more detail. And you'll remember that we had a public comment at the regular meeting, or no, the special meeting on the 11th of August with a number of recommendations and thoughts on different topics, and those aren't directly addressed in the report, but indirectly, a lot of them are addressed in the report. So I guess I would open it up to what questions do you have for myself or for Officer Robledo? And leave it to you, Dean, in terms of how you want to have this conversation.
What I'd like to do is, if you can, we could just go around the horn with questions that we have. I think yourself, I don't know if Sean is staff, is responsible or anything, and to Officer Shannon. Myself, I recognize the challenge that we have for this. I am curious about the signage. I realize that it's government, and we have to the city, but how long did it take to get some signs made and posted?
So I've been working with Shannon and the code enforcement officer and Public Works to kind of come up with what would be appropriate to put on a sign that would go on balconies, at the entrances, at the side entrance to the senior center, and probably like on the back driveway. And so we really wanted to pick out the most kind of relevant, yeah, salient issues that we're having versus the sign that's over on El Centro, which is a very, very long list and pretty, you know, pretty small. So we came to a conclusion about what that should be, what the sign should be that's in this report. And I'm working with Public Works right now to get a proof of what the sign would look like so that we can approve it and get them made. I don't think it probably takes very long, but they are working on it as we speak.
Was there a reason that you determined not to also create a replica of that for this side of the library?
We could. I mean, we could do a replica of that one. I think that it has a lot of, you know, campfires and barbecues must remain in existing pits. We don't have those on this park.
I understand that.
So I thought it would be, again, rethinking the signage to address the issues that are actually issues in our part would make the most sense. But if you recommend that for staff to look into that, we can certainly look into it.
Discuss whether or not anyone else feels that there may be an issue of equity and parity to have the same signage at both sides of the park. In addition to we have a much more important, more legible signs with the issues that are coming up. Just in terms of, and Officer Robledo, I heard this question, do you think that it would make enforcement potentially easier to be able to say, hey, look, there's the full sign there. There's all the other little signs. There's no way we didn't see it. Because with only one sign that has the full list, someone could say, I didn't see that. I didn't know. We're the honorable board and honorable trustee board. Thank you for putting this here. Yes, I think I, I'll just give you an example. We have a Mission Meridian parking structure here in the city. Well, there's one sign at one entrance, and there's not another sign. But when we did cite a repeat offender, they argued that there was only one sign in one location, so we basically put them on all entrances. Had to have it visible big enough, and we had to warn them before. And they just think it's fair to obviously put it in front of, put it in front of everybody. We have a beautiful park here. We don't want 10 million signs because it's but we need to know the rules and regulations, and we need to point to something and let the courts know when we do take action. Yes, there were signs posted. Yes, there were. Because those are the questions that are asked for this for us. We can write citations all day, but when it comes down to the courts doing something about it, you guys didn't have enough signs or it wasn't visible or whatnot enough for us. Yeah. So I would, unless anyone feels contrary to that, again, don't want a bunch of signs everywhere, but I think that it might be useful to have a comprehensive, a second comprehensive sign.
Sure.
Because it's an entrance, entrance there, entrance here. And then the more pointed signs at other entrances, so.
Pardon me a moment. Can I just ask for everyone to speak up a little more clearly? It's a little difficult to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Serwin, so when we enter the city, we have a overnight parking ordinance, no parking from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And the courts have ruled that in the entrances, it's sufficient. We don't need to put on every side street that they walk. It has to be on a main road there. So I would just kind of like to mimic that. In my opinion, have you as the board looking into that, but have it mimicked as of entrance of the park on one side. Actually, there's four sides of it. You know, just at least four signs at the entrance of a park or where something is visible. Just like the balcony here, you could put one that's hidden enough where someone walking up there is able to see it. That's not a lot.
Are you suggesting that we have more comprehensive signs?
Absolutely, because the the message has to be the same. They can go over here and say, well, I didn't know. It didn't say no smoking over there. I'm just going to smoke on this side. Well, it says no smoking. It's just a fight that everybody has, and it's just best to be uniform all the way abroad.
I'm not sure what is meant by the comprehensive sign. We're talking about something that's got all the items that's on here. I think that's too much because it's like when you get a long text from somebody, you just don't believe it. Your eyes just glaze over, and a lot of these things are really unnecessary. I don't know how many times do people write in workings through the property, but if we do, we'll deal with it on a case by case basis. I think it's good in as many locations as possible to hit people with the four or five really important things. The mechanical toys probably not real important. But the other things are important, and people will read it that there are four or five things in front of them, but if there's 12 and 15 things, you won't see any of them, even the important ones. But if there's four or five important ones, you'll probably see them all, and we can make the type bigger.
I appreciate that concern, and I think that's what I was discussing, and I'm different to Officer Robledo there. There's a difference between, is it legible? Are people reading it? And for purposes of being able to prosecute offenders, will they be able to say, you didn't have a comprehensive sign at the entrance I came into the park through? So I don't, I should not have been held to any of them. So I'm wondering if there's, if there's a sweet spot there. One sign, one comprehensive sign on this side, one comprehensive sign on this side, and then several signs that do have the salient issues, because as you said, we probably don't need to have a lot of fires. I don't think even with all the homeless that we've had, nobody's made a campfire.
Well, here's another opinion. We have a QR code now, and you can put a QR code to see further if you want to look into further municipal codes. You know, you press the QR code, the QR code goes to the all of municipal codes, but I believe it's kind of like, you know, you want to put a certain amount, because if you're driving down the street, one says 25, and the other one says, where are you looking? Sure, that's just kind of kind of being my, in my opinion, I'm there, but to kind of cover everything, yeah, maybe they don't have a phone with the QR code, and it may be outdated in five or 10 years, but that's something that can be changed.
I mean, it seems to me like there's two different purposes. The comprehensive sign is sort of the legal, we posted it, you have to follow it, and the other ones are the practical. We have the same conversation about our interior library signage, right? What is the point of putting it up in the library? If you put up the entire code of conduct, no one's going to read it. No one can see it. It's too much. So we have a sign that's kind of the abridged version of the code of conduct that just hits the most important things, and then it says to see the full code of conduct go here. So I think the combination of the comprehensive signs and the shorter signs that just have those like six, I think it's six items, would be a good combination of things.
That's great. I have a suggestion based on what you just said. Could we make the sign that has the six and the QR code to see the full, here are the most commonly offended issues, and here, if you want to see the full list, here's the QR code.
To when we get a chance.
Yes, please.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Annie.
Um, can I ask, like, what is the purpose of, who are we, is the audience of reading the sign? Is it the individual who's experiencing homelessness because they're going to read it and know I shouldn't litter? Or is it that people who are walking by, seeing someone who's experiencing homelessness, is going to say, oh, that person is breaking this rule or not breaking the rule? I just need more clarity of, you know, what's the sign's purpose? If it's to deter people from actually doing these things? Is that the real deterrent? Is the sign going to help with that? I'm not clear if that's true or not.
Well, I mean, I would like to think that if people, especially with things like smoking, a lot of people just literally don't know that it's not allowed. So the signage isn't for homeless people in particular. It's for any park user to sort of say, these are these main things that you really aren't supposed to be doing in this place. And, but it also is a tool to say, you know, if we're trying to enforce something or someone is smoking out in front of the library, we can say, hey, you know what? We have a sign, you know, you're not allowed to smoke here. It's really helpful for staff. In my last job, we did signage like that around the back of the park, and it just helped so much because people would just argue, no, I can do that. I'm like, no, you really can't. Look at the sign. So it's sort of a resource for staff when they're trying to do enforcement, and I would hope that it deters some of the behavior, but obviously, people are not always reading signs and not always following directions. But if you don't have it posted all, they don't even have the opportunity to read it and try to follow the rules, you know?
I don't think we need, you know, no graffiti, no vandalism. I think that's somebody's going to chuckle when they see that, because you can't.
I think that we do, and Annie, to answer your question, my thought process is that it's twofold. One, and very importantly, the most common ones, no smoking, no littering, so that staff can point them out, and two, having the comprehensive list be available, even if by QR code, so that if someone is cited, if someone does come and graffiti, we've actually had a couple of instances of graffiti here in town recently. If someone does graffiti and they're caught, then, and cited by the police, the police can then enforce that in court by saying the rules were all posted, they had access to be able to know that they couldn't do this, and they did it anyway. So without that signage, they'll be able to claim probably pretty conclusively that there was no sign. I didn't know. I mean, maybe.
Anyway, why do we need a sign that says you can't do it? You can't kill anybody. I don't think we need to put a sign saying graffiti and vandalism. That's why I just want to hit the no littering, no loitering, clean up after your dog, things like that. So they've got to do this stuff.
I mean, I.
You're a lawyer. You know what people do in court.
No, but I don't think that's, that's what I'm saying. I am a lawyer. That's not a thing.
Just to be a tool for education, regardless of what is decided to be put on there, or just kind of a reminder of the common things, like we said, no smoking, no wheel toys, which is skateboarding, stuff like that. I think that should be kind of upfront. Yes, we do know we're not supposed to graffiti. And will a judge say, well, there wasn't a sign there. You're not going to get prosecuted. No, they're going to still prosecute them, most likely if they're caught in that action. But it's a tool for us to use to say, hey, let's just put a post-it, or even a reminder.
I mean, I'm thinking about, you know, the graffiti, maybe it's teens sometimes, and maybe just seeing, I like an official reminder that, hey, this is not allowed. We're keeping an eye on this. Maybe that does deter, you know, someone who's just sort of, you know, about.
Well, I have to agree with Kenny. I think a long, long list isn't going to help. I think smaller signs, just to remind people, like, you know, Kathy, you know, I was the one who asked if we could put more signs out in front about skateboarding, because, you know, the skateboarders are reckless, and as people are trying to get into the library, and then the sign was facing with skateboarder over here skateboarding, and the sign was this way, and so sometimes the location of the sign is silly. So I just think smaller signs that look explicit and then strategically placed so that they can actually be seen and read. But I have to agree with Kenny, this long list that people can this be changed, this long list with no livestock?
Well, this, I don't know, this sign has been up for I don't know how many years. I don't know whose idea it was to put it up, but I'm assuming all the parks probably have it. I would think it's that it's in every park in the city, so I don't think we would be changing it unless.
What can it just, it's up, and it can just stay over there, but I would say not to replicate this long list and put it on the opposite side. I would rather see more realistic signs on the opposite side.
With things that we know are issues. I mean, we can always edit, modify that.
Yeah, I mean, the six things that we wanted to, that in conversation with the code enforcement officer and and Lieutenant Robledo, were the no persons permitted in the park between 10 and 5, no littering, no possession or consumption of alcohol, no smoking, no graffiti, and no vandalism, because those are the six things that that we tend to have issues with. I don't know, did they put any skateboarding signs up? No.
Yeah.
Did you get new skateboarding signs?
Yeah.
They're little.
And they're way up high. They're in the news.
Can I ask a couple of quick questions? One, in terms of that six list, and again, I want to be very clear. I'm not suggesting that it's an either or. I'm saying it's both and. So first, my first question, Dr. Robledo, that other parks, do they have more than one sign of the comprehensive rules?
Some of them have a lot of them, and it's kind of designed to that area where to what happened at that park. So we have the honor royal, there's a place where the old lips are passing up pretty late, or what have they, well, there's a lot of graffiti, so there's graffiti. They sit there and smoke. So there's, you know, there's signs particular to that, that one park. Why don't I make them particular to this park? Because everywhere is different. The residential area, that area where, you know, people go and smoke or, you know, drink or hide out.
So then my other question, my other question is, and maybe it requires a change to the municipal code, but you said alcohol. I don't think we want people smoking pot in the park either, so can we say alcohol or drugs?
Do you know what?
Can we have vaping? Smoking or vaping?
Yeah, we'd have to look at the code to see what it says about vaping. I know that, I mean, vaping has been a big conversation about, you know, are we going to prohibit the sale? But I don't know what it says in the municipal code about use on city, you know, on public property, et cetera.
I think, I would love it if we could get a ruling from the city attorney on that, because, again, not to belabor the point, but as an attorney, it's my job to say, you said this, but you didn't say that, and that is not defined exclusively as this, so therefore I can do that. And if it doesn't say vaping, somebody's going to say vaping is not smoking. There's no smoke. There's only vapor, so it's not smoking. So rather than set ourselves up for failure, let's set ourselves up for success.
Yeah, but I would say that if we find out that it's not in the municipal code, I don't want to wait to make my signs, because we're not going to get any municipal.
Can we put things up that aren't in the municipal code, conduct we just don't want? And we don't say we don't want vaping, and whether we can enforce that. No, it's so, right, but it might be a deterrent still.
I mean, we don't have, we have to have an authority, there has to be some authority for putting up rules, and the only authority is either the municipal code, the law, or in the library building, the board of trustees, you know, rules and regulations that they've approved. So I don't think we can just, you know, make up things that we would like people to do or not do, and tell them to do it. We have to have something to refer back to that's the.
That's what we enable in office.
Well, let's go, let's go back to that idea. I like this idea that we have signage that's relevant to the library park. And we can, I don't know if we want to take the time in this meeting to do it, but maybe we could just, you know, just make it relevant.
Well, we've suggested what we think is relevant, so I guess what would be helpful is if you disagree with what's what.
So why don't we look at those? That signage is no persons permitted in the park between 10:00 PM and 5:00 AM, which is based on South Pasadena Municipal Code, section 21.2. No littering, which is based on 21.17. No possession or consumption of alcohol, it's been 21.18.
I assume significantly, we say alcohol and drugs?
Again, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, that might not be the same municipal code.
But we can check.
Yeah, if our concern is that we're having that house folks who are coming in because of the train, there may be people coming in who are using intravenous drugs or other drugs that go beyond alcohol or smoking. No graffiti. Um, no graffiti, which is twenty, point four one, and no vandalism, twenty-one, point twenty-one. I think that those, you know, based on the other things. Dogs kept on leash. I don't know if anyone's really concerned about, although actually.
There is signage out there already.
Yeah, yeah, somebody, you know, gets bit by a dog that's not on leash, you could be uh, looking for. So, you know, I agree, no unauthorized livestock, which you probably don't have to worry about. My daughter and I like to joke about, you go to Disneyland, it says that you uh, can have a uh, uh, emotional support dog or small horse.
Yeah, miniature horse.
Miniature horse. Wild. Um, I don't think anyone's gonna be coming here with a, a, a miniature horse. Um, although we have that as a, a second one, we're pretty far away from the uh, the Royal Stables. Have we had a problem with motorized, unauthorized motorized vehicles in the park?
Um, no, but it becomes trendy at times. So currently it's not trendy at one time, the little uh, pocket, lot, motorcycle or little. Um, I know, um, I know motor, uh, motor bikes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not concerned about a motorbike, um, mechanical toys and model airplanes. Have you had problems with those in the past?
No, and again, I mean, I'm picturing, you know, the location of these signs are the balconies. Um, the, the porch of the community room. The back entrance of the senior center. I mean, that, those are not the things that are happening. Those things would be happening out in the grass and on the pathways, which is nowhere near where these signs are gonna be placed.
I think, I think that your, your list is great. And again, um, the only one I would uh, wonder about is the unauthorized sale or offer to sell. Uh, if that might be something that comes up as a problem. Um, but uh, and again, my point about the comprehensive sign was merely for enforcement uh, and prosecution purposes. If that's a problem that the city anticipates or has run into, um, I would say that we should consider that. Either at least one other, instead of only one for an entire square block. Um, but I like the six that you got. I think it's great. We should get those signs as quickly as possible and get them up. Subject to, I think we've all, we're all in agreement that we'd like to see if um, and drugs can be added.
And vaping, I'll look at both of those.
Smoking and vaping and, and drugs.
I, I had one question that would be to just, anything, anything we did, no unauthorized sales or offer to sell any article merchandise or, or thing whatsoever. Is that two separate prohibitions, no unauthorized sale and no offer to sell any article, or is that an example of, I don't know if it's saying no sales at all of anything? Or no unauthorized sales, because we do have sales there, where the, the Chinese American Club has. Well, that's what I didn't know if that made.
I think the offer to sell is to get to someone who says that, well, hey, I did offer to sell them crack, but they didn't buy it. So that's not a sale.
Okay, so I think that's all it's there. So, okay, I just thought, I didn't know if it meant something separate, no sales of anything.
I think it's vendors also too, right? Like the, the farmer's market's very close by, so you have to be like authorized to sell something. Like if you're gonna, I'm gonna start selling oranges, then I have to have author, be authorized.
If there were an event in the library park, most of the events that I've seen in the library park, people are giving away samples or giving away uh, you know, promotional items for their, their business or their, their cause. Uh, but there could be, uh, I think when we've done um, like the uh, the art, the art walk. Uh, and the um, eclectic music festival, we've had uh, artisan alley down here in front of the library, that could conceivably be on library property, that would be an authorized seller. So uh, I think that's why this is important to have in at least one or two spots within the, the uh, um, the park. But I love the idea of this, the small signs with the six things are maybe not so small, so they are legible. I don't know if the city attorney has had problems with prosecutions, if there's been problems with prosecution because of improper size or things like that, if there have been, if the park, if there is case law that is on a, a relevant point, um, you know, in terms of how big the font has to be or something like that. I would love to see if they can quickly, you know, uh, remark on that, so we can adhere to what, so if God forbid, the police do have to cite someone, we do have the ability, if it's necessary, to actually pursue prosecution.
And can I, and can I just uh, go back to just one concern that uh, uh, you know, I have and maybe some of the neighbors have had, and I know I've talked to everybody about this, no persons permitted in the park between ten PM and five AM, but a person can move out onto the sidewalk and be there all night long.
Yeah.
So there's nothing we can do about that.
No, that's Martinburg, Boyzey, you know, uh, the Supreme Court decision, um, uh, people have the right to sleep, um, that they're, that they're right, they have the right to sleep. And if there's no chopper or anything available during that time, um, it's not where we go to. They can't do it in the park, but they can do it on the curb.
Yeah.
Or on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
Okay.
So uh, if, if we're in agreement um, regarding the signage, I'd like to move on to the next item, cause I think we're going to come to what we've been discussing. And uh, address the issue that the public uh, has expressed concern about, about what we've done. Uh, and I think what we, we should discuss is, uh, in addition to what we've done, um, and what the police have done, what is our authority to do? And what is, what are the constraints on the police because of the Boise case and any other cases? So uh, maybe we could run through these issues really quickly. Does anyone um, have any concerns about the uh, suggestions about uh, addressing the wifi? Cause that is one that, uh, it's, as, as, as we sometimes refer to it in port law, it's an attractive nuisance. When you have the wifi, it's gonna, people are gonna come here for the wifi. So uh, Kathy, can we summarize very briefly what you would suggest?
Yeah, do you, are you gonna skip straight to there? Do you wanna talk first about the, the section on the library code of conduct? And the municipal code, and again, kind of the context of how we do enforcement and what, what is our authority?
We, we, I'm sorry, I did, I did go off of that. You, you spent so much time on the signage issue.
Yeah, I mean, we just might, that might be the best thing just to start with.
Okay.
Um, so the library board of trustees has the authority to um, enact bylaws, rules and regulations. Um, as it's, and it's quote, as may be necessary for the administration of the library. Um, so for us, that translates into the library's interior and the, the functioning of the library. Um, so the board historically has not had any authority for the park. Um, never has that been the case. So all the rules that you guys have made are about how to use the library, what's happening inside the library, what's allowed inside the library. Um, the rules for the park have been captured in the South Pasadena Municipal Code. And those are enforced by typically the police department, maybe sometimes code enforcement officer. I, I don't know, like if, you know, maybe, I'm not sure, I'm not an expert, but um, so that's kind of the breakdown. Then the way that we enforce things in the library is that, that we have a municipal code that um, allows us to ban people from the park and the library for specified periods of time, depending on the um, violation that they've committed. And when they have been banned, it's a, it's a misdemeanor if they come back onto the property in that period of time. So that's the mechanism that we use to manage behavioral problems. Um, we ban people for certain periods of time. And, you know, take away their privileges. And then when they're allowed to come back, they sometimes come back. Um, but that's, that's the mechanism that, that we use to do the inside enforcement. And then of course, the police department does the outside enforcement.
So effectively, we can, we can uh, impose an ad hoc injunction against their coming back onto the property. Uh, we had discussed this uh, last year, and I don't know that we ever got an answer of, if there is a ruling as to does the library include any element outside of its doors? And is there a, a line where it's no longer library and becomes library park? Or is everything outside of the doors of the library and the walls of the library considered the library park? So that we would not have authority to impose the, the rules of conduct?
I think we came to the conclusion that things like the entrances and the balconies, which are literally attached to our building, are also under, at least to some extent, your authority. So if someone was on the balcony doing something that was um, a behavior that's not allowed in the library, we might act on that, you know, if it's um, but again, things that happen outside of the balcony might be things that the police would be called in to deal with.
Right.
Um, but I think it does, to me, it makes sense that, you know, the entrance, like right outside the, the front door, right outside the community room door, um, outside our entrances. Those seem to me to be areas that are enough library adjacent or, you know, literally part of our building that we could make rules about those spaces.
Okay.
I think.
Um, I like that we have uh, the ability to enforce uh, that um, is good. Um, it would, you know, I always defer to the city attorney to give us a ruling. If they can give us a ruling as to, yes, based on case law in other cities, you can do it within thirty feet of your door um, on the concrete, but not on the grass or something, you know, it'd be great to have that so that staff is aware of, 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 of if there are any specific limitations to their ability to do that. Um, Officer Blado, can you speak to what you can and are prohibited to do in terms of unhoused or anyone else uh, in the park?
Honestly, uh, everybody has the right to use the park, whether they're housed on house or what have you. Where it becomes a problem is when a, a crime is broken. So if someone violates a crime or a city ordinance, then we can take action on that, that subject. But if someone wants to come and enjoy the park, whether they're housed on house, that they have absolute every right to, to do so. Uh, we're not in the business to violate people's rights. Um, so if they, uh, someone that's housed or unhoused wants to camp out on during the daytime and enjoy, you know, the shade here right here, we, we can't. But if their actions are inappropriate, then yes, we can. If uh, they're breaking laws, then that's when we, we step in, but we can't um, file anybody's civil rights, and we're not going to.
So if someone is here every day for sixty days in a row in the same spot for ten hours, but they're not breaking the municipal code, there's nothing we can do.
And we have every right to be there against the, the U R I.
But if somebody using bathroom facilities that don't exist.
Yeah, I mean, uh, I don't think there's anything in the municipal code uh, for, for them, and that may need to change. Uh, we may need to talk to the city attorney about that, but uh, um, last time, we don't have the problem just here. We have the problem other places.
Sure.
Uh, someone gets out of the car, uses a restroom, go like, um, on the street, you know, they've been drinking, now that we have a legal right to approach on their, you know, we, we're leaving themselves or what have you. As long as they're not exposing themselves for a sexual gratification and that, you know.
Really, it's not against the municipal code to urinate in public?
We don't have one.
That might be something that maybe should be taken up by city council. There, there, you can defecate in public without breaking the law?
You know, we'll have to refer to the city attorney.
Those, those would be things, cause I know that that has been an issue here in the library park, not often, but it has happened. So that would be something that maybe we could look into. Um, uh, and I, I can look into it here.
Okay.
It's like you will refer to the health department, the county health department. We, we did at one point.
Yeah.
Um, but you're not gonna get a response, uh, for, you know, forty-eight hours. And uh, when people want action, they want to act and say immediately and not in forty-eight hours.
Yeah, and I, and I'd like to be very clear, my, my intention here is not to militarize or, or police state around the library park. But simply so that we know as the library board of trustees, um, and the public can be communicated to. What is the authority of the library board, of the library staff? Uh, what must be referred to the police and what the police can't do anything about. So there is no ordinance against public information. As disgusting as I think anyone would find that to be, uh, if it's not something you can uh, cite someone for, then there's nothing that staff can report.
Um, you know, some people may argue, uh, you know, they're, they're scandal, they're sticking out or what have you, but that starts going to, is it for sexual gratification or is it in a more certain sense? So, um, but I will double check on that. Um, I will double check on municipal.
Definitely wonderful to know. Um, could you speak in a little bit more detail about the Boise case? Cause I know that that became an issue with uh, you move people out of the park and they just camp, they camped onto the sidewalk and there's nothing that could happen, which I'm sorry to laugh, just it's, it's not funny, haha, it's funny, it is.
Yeah, just uh, I'll just read uh, a quick, um, um, Martinburg, Burg, Boyzey, with a twenty eighteen decision by the scene by the US Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit. In response to a two thousand and nine lawsuit by six homeless plaintiffs against the Bay of Boise, Idaho regarding the city anti-camping ordinance. Uh, we don't have an anti-camping ordinance here, here in the city. Um, we do have, you cannot camp in the parks. Um, but you can go out onto the street.
And, and is it your understanding of that decision that even if we did have a anti-camping ordinance, that it would be unenforceable because of that?
You can't get in the park, so I mean. Hey, you can go on the sidewalk, but you know, uh, well, obviously we're gonna get called, you know, thirty, forty people are gonna call us and what we have to do is educate that person and refer them to get assistance.
I, uh, it would be, it would have been nice, um, I, I thought that we were gonna have the city attorney here and or mayor. Uh, several of us did meet with, um, there is a group that, what have they called, Locata?
Oh, Locata.
Locata, that is available one day a week right now. Uh, we're sharing them with two other communities where they're also one day a week. And if I understood them correctly, their intention is that after a test run, they're going to then become available to the communities eat every business day. Uh, but they'll be, you know, obviously their, their abilities are strong to get to the community places at once. Uh, that can um, uh, provide that education and support to unhoused, uh, or anyone else having uh, an issue. Um, as I understood, they, they also deal with uh, people that are housed that are having issues. Um, uh, and so that's something that will be very supportive, I, I think, going forward. Uh, and as people learn that that's there, that can be a, a a deterrent, because they don't wanna have people constantly coming up to them asking, do you need help? I'm here to help you. Um, uh, but it would also be a, a positive rule of force, reinforcing that and hopefully moving those people to uh, other services.
Absolutely. And it's, it's about education and uh, you know, we can educate and then enforce after. Sometimes we don't have the, the privilege to uh, educate right off the bat. Someone can make a, a crime or something we have to. But municipal code, we can educate and uh, um, move forward with enforcement counter. Um, it's gonna be up to the officers to do, um, but that's what it's been coming down to lately. Officers have been coming down, you know, across the library and reminding people, you can't, you can't sleep at the park and here in a certain level of finding. Been uh, um, in this park, extra patrolling in the last month, let's say more than uh, twenty-five, thirty times.
We appreciate that greatly. Um, and uh, uh, yeah, uh, does anyone have any other thoughts? I, I'm doing a lot of talking and I'm not trying to, you know, enforce myself on you, or I just feel that I, I'm trying to dive into the conversation.
You know, on these issues in general?
Uh, uh, the issues that we just discussed before.
I mean, there's one coming up, I, I can wait till we get there.
Sure, okay.
I'd love to ask, ask a question also. Um, here's a moment now. Um, Kathy, how is it for the staff right now being on the front lines of this? And I'm just wondering, do they have recommendations? Do they have things that they see they need? I know they're the ones that are, you know, having to be the face of um, upholding the regulations at the forefront, even if the police are called eventually. So I'm just curious what the feedback is from them.
Yeah, it's, it's a huge burden and it's exhausting, um, dealing with these behavioral issues all day long, every day. It's a, it's really a source of burnout for, for staff. Um, it's interesting because we had a four-hour strategic planning session on Wednesday. And some of what came out of that in terms of um, people kind of listing goals and things they want to see and then rating those and, and how high. Um, people would like to see like a social service provider either in the library or, you know, in the city's employ. Um, so there's definitely a sense that there's this huge need that can't be met with our existing structures. Now, we do have this new mobile crisis unit pilot project, which we're hoping is gonna fill some of that need. Fill some of that need, um right now, the focus is on mental health crisis, not on. You know, navigating people to services that would help them if they're in need or if they're um. If they're experiencing homelessness, but I'm, I think the idea is that we're gonna get there.
Yeah, we're moving forward to the um right now, we're doing the mental health crisis. Portion of it and we're moving on to the um homeless homeless um outreach program on. Providing people with resource to be able to succeed uh and try to get off the streets. And again, that's one of the education tools that we're trying to use and say, hey, look. We can help you, you just gonna need their help, and they're gonna also want their help too, we can't afford people to not get their help. But again, that's where the enforcement comes, you know, uh you already told you can't sleep on there, there's beds available, we're here to help you. That's where the enforcement comes, but again, our goal is to educate first and then start enforcement.
Is that something that South has PD is doing or the city's doing?
That's a South has been has been doing, we've been doing since twenty seventeen. It's the whole program, the homeless outreach program, we've seen a need on the growing number of um residents, unhoused residents that uh we've been.
What's the number in South?
So we did a point in time count, actually, a point in time count comes out today, and I don't know the exact number, but when we were out there, we we. We basically point in to twenty eight people. Absolutely, but let me just educate you on this, because we do know a lot of our unhoused neighbors. Um we went out the next day, because I I scratched my head and I said, you know, I didn't see Kathy, I don't know. We went out again the next day, didn't see him again, went out the next week and didn't see him again. Yeah, so they they were truly transgiving on that, but we do have the the certain core. People that actually are laying their heads to the city that we we definitely wanna help, uh but also educate too.
So yeah, Annie, I don't know if that answered your question.
Does, and I think like it's really important for us to note in our budget request to the city. Because the library staffer at the forefront of this, like everyone knows the library is like the the community service where you all are welcome. And the staff here are facing this much more than I'd say. In any of the other parks, I don't know about Orange Grove at the Recreation Center or not, if they have to uh manage a lot of this, but. The fact that we're having so much turnover with staff and that this is. A issue that they're es- essentially serving as social service providers, having to navigate and putting their own lives at risk also. Of having to talk and enforce these uh rules, like. I think it's something we should definitely be highlighting, and I'm glad to come up in the strategic plan, but um that there's places for us to. Support the staff and um. I just provide other ways to kind of mitigate how much of a brunt of this is for them.
Thank you, Annie, for bringing up that that really important issue. It is something that I don't know if we have the flexibility to to add to our budget request, maybe. Purely aspirationally, but to create that dialogue that maybe then can be carried over to city council. In terms of this is not just the library park that needs this, it's the whole city that needs this, so maybe. We can start that ball and work with Parks and Recs to try and uh enhance that and maybe find. Fun somewhere to have an actual social uh uh network.
Or a security guard, I mean, you know, what, yeah, I think that um. Uh yeah, I think that these are conversations that we need to have with the with the city administration and um I think the strategic planning. Survey data um helps to kind of capture some of that input. So uh we'll be looking at that more closely and thinking about how to share that with the city manager.
Thank you so much.
And they brought up um at the meeting yesterday about the navigators that are being paid by grant funds. Like Glendale, homeless library and other places.
You wanted me to go, we can go to wifi? Yeah, just so. Yeah, so um you know, libraries, one of our core. Responsibilities is to try to bridge a digital divide and and help people be connected to these resources that we all take for granted. So wifi and reliable, good, you know, broadband wifi is something that um the state library has been. Issuing grants to try to help libraries throughout California get that, so we now have that, we've had the good wifi since twenty seventeen, I think. Um and I think most libraries in California are not now on board, some of the really rural spots, maybe not yet, but um. So yeah, we provide this great wifi, it does go beyond the park, I mean, beyond the building, I don't know how far, I don't know, you know, if it goes. Twenty feet, thirty feet, if you go all the way to sidewalk, I've never tried it, um but it is turned off. Between at ten P M. at night, so it's off when the park is closed. Um and it and it goes on at um eight A M. in the morning, so I. I think that that's reasonable, I don't think we wanna leave it on, I definitely wouldn't wanna leave it on all night. Um and then I know the public commenter had some recommendations about passwords and that's just not the best practice. Um it's not practicable, people are not. Being asked for for passwords to use public library wifi. Um and and if they are, the 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 I think I put in here, we had a. A director survey and and sixteen libraries responded and. Or was it fourteen anyway, six, I think sixteen libraries responded and only two had password requirements. Um and that's more about trying to have a way to capture usage than it is about trying to control who gets on the wifi. So staff feel pretty strongly that we don't want um password.
Anyone can get a library card.
Yeah.
So we wouldn't be able to refuse someone the password, even if we made it, it it changed around having a library card. Because then anyone could just get a library card and get the password, so we kind of.
It's just busy work.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, it just creates a a couple of layers of um. Work for staff and and hurdles for for customers to get what it is that they want, so. For us, it's sort of antithetical to what we're about. So uh but again, we do, it's off at ten o'clock at night, so that it's it's not um attracting people after the park is closed.
Have any thoughts, questions, comments on that? Electrical outlets, I'm just gonna posit what it says here, there's only one outlet, it's blocked off, I don't think that's really, we found anyone, have you ever gotten a call because someone's. Broken into that outlet?
Well, they did, we first blocked it and they tore it open, but now it's like blocked, blocked, so they can't get it.
Is it accessible if that's ever necessary for actual?
I don't know, probably, I mean, maybe, maybe it's still electrified behind the plate, but you can't get it off.
Okay, great, that's good to know. Uh Los Angeles Home Services, Los Angeles requests.
Yeah, just so you so you have a sense of what we do and what we try to do, we put. We put in many, many requests to the Los Angeles Home Services Authority. To get people to come out and try to connect with the people that are in need, um it's really a challenge, they are understaffed. Um they try to get with here within seventy two hours, but of course, many of these people, they're there when we make the request, but by the time. Losa gets out here, they're gone, so it's just a real struggle, which where is why I think that um the pilot program that we're gonna have. At our immediate disposal will make such a difference, because there's this continuity and that person will be able to come every week. And track that person down that needs to be, you know, kind of walked through this, navigated through the services stuff. So um I mean, we put in the last request and and sometimes they make the connection, um but many times they don't.
I think it hit on the head that that Locata having that one, at least, we know this day of the week they're gonna be here, because. We've got our example right here with Officer Wado, who. As you said, you know, the unhoused population in town, you know, who's not normal, normally here, so. I I think that that kind of consistency builds trust, builds understanding. And also allows for better enforcement to, you know, who's not really a problem. Uh resources for sure.
Yeah, just F I I, we do have a a, you know, a brochure with a number of resources for people in need and we pass that out when people. Ask for it or if they look like they need help and they might be um amenable to being approached about that, we might, you know, staff might actually approach people. Um so just so you know, we do that, I think that it's a goal in my mind that that the city would have. Work on maybe a website or something where if those resources are all in one place and, you know, if PD has an update, they can make it if. The city manager's office has new information, they can update it, we have new information, because right now, I think we sort of started with the police. Resource list and then community services did a resource list, and so we kind of did a resource list that. That blended those and checked all the information to make sure it was current, so keeping that information current. And making it available, I think, is important, so we do have the brochure.
Um opportunity, and that would also be something that maybe could be Q R coded and put onto a thing, so that staff doesn't have to actually. Intervene, they could just say, hey, if you're looking for resources, there's this available. Because uh I think you and I have discussed this before, a lot of the unhoused do actually have cell phones. And they utilize them to find available resources. Um so that that could be maybe an excellent way to uh to to to. Intervene more uh cash.
Mm hmm, yeah, we were talking about that in the strategic planning session that we thought about having like a. A spot in the library that actually just, you know, services for people in need and there's a Q R code and so we'll continue to work, there's a. A group that's meeting quarterly, the city, this, the mayor um has kind of spearheaded this group and it. It's lots of different people in the community that are interested in dealing with these types of issues and to maybe out of that group. We can generate some some movement to get that into some kind of web web form, so that it's available.
You said there isn't notice inside the library security?
No, not yet, but that's something we were thinking, we should, we should do that instead of.
Yeah, yeah, you have an outside one, and that way staff doesn't have to be put into a position to intervene, and your point is so well made. That, you know, we're having trouble already with retention and I I part of it could be that people are. Not wanting to intervene uh with potentially, you know, uh. If people are having social issues, uh emotional issues.
Well, they're not gonna find any other library that's any better, so that's not, I think, why people, I mean, people might leave the profession for that reason.
Okay, well, uh great, it's uh again, I appreciate what you're doing, I think we've talked about the mobile crisis team.
Yeah.
Um security guard.
Yeah, so I think that um there might be a place for a security guard, I also don't know if it would. Lead people to think. Oh, it must be so dangerous there, they have to have a security guard, and I don't want people to to think that, because the fact is. No one's ever been hurt in the library, there's never been like an is- an instance of violence that resulted in someone's being hurt or or injured. So it's it is a safe place, it's not always a comfortable place, there might be. Situations or behaviors that make people uncomfortable um or even scared. But it it I think that it's it's safe and I think staff in general would agree that it's generally safe. But you know, maybe a security guard would be helpful, um just, I think the challenge and and what they found in the. Previously, which I described here, is that they got a security guard company, um but the security guards were just not adequately trained for this. Type of location, you know, if you're if you're a security guard at Target.
Yeah.
That's very different from dealing with rowdy teenagers or 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 mental, you know, mental health issues, whatever, so if we did. Try to seek a security guard, we would just have to work on making sure that um that person understood our code of conduct. And how to handle the violations and what, how we handle that.
I'm I'm seeing a an economic opportunity here, um. We spoke briefly before about looking into the opportunity to have a social need officer. Um maybe there's a company out there that provides. Uh I I had a, we were talking about the rock band, I I I almost got arrested in McGregor uh to taking pictures with. The singer worked was a guard at the local uh mental health facility. And they were very trained and their job was to so intervene when people were having an episode. Yet they were also trained that they could physically intervene if necessary, so maybe there is a. Uh an opportunity to have someone who has the 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 training to be uh an intervention officer, who is also. Able to be a security officer, maybe, and maybe wouldn't be dressed like a cop. No disrespect, but because then that does, if if I walk into a building and I see a a officer armed or otherwise. In in a uniform, I go, why is that person there? Why do they need them? But if there was someone who was in in regular street clothes, who was available, who could um. God forbid, physically intervene, but is more there to be able to, hey, I see that maybe you're having an issue, can we come over here and talk about it?
Mm hmm, yeah, I like that idea.
That that might be two birds with one stone.
And also, an an another thing, a a natural progression of all of this also. If if we expand programs and events. In the library, you know, I think visible presence of just people deter. And hopefully people, you know, take care of each other, so I just think is if there's more activity, like during. The summertime, when they had, when the kids were outside, there's a lot more activity, a lot more people are around. And then I think then positive behaviors tend to come out a little bit more and maybe some of the negative behaviors. Don't come out so much, so I mean, that's, you know. They're having, I don't know about, I I'm I'm not so keen on having a security guard.
Again, I wouldn't want a security guard, but if if we could combine the idea of having a social services person who's there. To provide that, but is also trained to be able to uh intercede if there is a a a physical altercation going on. Um because I certainly do not want staff, you know.
Well, we call the police, I mean, we don't, we don't get into physical altercations, you know, we make our, we we use our judgment and and the police. Are called if we have any inkling that there's gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, any kind of violence.
Love to see, but uh I think looking into the navigators certainly uh would be fruitful, other libraries are getting them. And this is the person who's focused on mental health and um and been quite effective, our consultants mentioned that and. Glendale Public Library uh librarian mentioned that in one of our meetings on the strategic planning, and it's a full time person. I assume, uh and that person's there all the time.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, is that there's someone who is trained in how to uh. Like when we, the other day, when we were talking, you were talking with one of the normally here people and.
Yeah.
They don't wanna talk to him, they don't want it, they don't want the 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 services, but maybe if there's someone who's here all the time, they get. They get ingratiated and then they maybe open up.
Uh when when you have a security guard here, are you talking, I. Read that or I saw maybe outside, we were talking about inside, I I I think it's a good idea to have a security guard. And maybe not with consistent hours, so if they're here at different times, people think they're here all the time, because they don't know when to expect them. And it could deter some of the conduct that we're trying to avoid, while we're talking about the signage and things like that, as opposed to inside the library, I thought might be better suited for. You're you're talking about a a resources person, the city might be hiring.
Um I think that that would be to be decided, um Glendale Central Library, which has a similar setup to us, they have a freestanding. Um community center, senior center, but it's sort of on the same campus, um those library security guards patrol. Both of those buildings and kind of the the outdoor area as well, so if we if we had a person, I would say probably they would walk around. You know, the entrances to look around, but um.
Maybe we should have a park ranger. No, I'm not, I'm not kidding. Not on a horse. We're they're needing horse, so they could have on a leash, uh but seriously, maybe maybe the city's office, they should have a park ranger who. Who, yeah, not threatening and and you know, has stickers for the kids and no idea.
There's a park lane, you can go between Garfield Park and here and that's.
Yeah, actually, one park that has the 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 uh the. Whatever they call it, the resource center for the kids.
The nature park would probably like that, you know.
Yeah.
You know, that's that's not a bad idea.
That's kind of what I'm talking about, with this person who can bridge those two worlds. Um but maybe would, I I I appreciate your your point, Penny, that having somebody in uniform is a deterrent, the question is. Does that make people feel ill at ease at the same time, but maybe there's a way to find a way to. Cause now now it's Ranger Rick, he's here to help us, you know, to educate. Obviously, we can wax full topic on all this, it's all budgetary issue. Um Kathy, would you speak to the facility maintenance issue interior and exterior?
Yeah, just so you know, um we do have regular custodial um. Service at every night, the custodian comes and cleans the building and cleans the bathrooms three days a week, uh weekdays a week. We have daytime service, so somebody comes in and cleans the bathrooms, if anything is a miss in the bathrooms, somebody tells us right away. We lock them, we clean them, we do whatever has to be done, so um I know the commenter last time seemed to think the bathrooms were. Just, you know, hideously filthy, which is um not my experience of them. Um I mean, you know, it's a public bathroom, it's. Um, I mean, you know, it's a public bathroom, it's, you know, it's not. It it is what it is, but it they're they're cleaned regularly. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that and um. But of course, they are inadequate. I mean, they're too small. Um, the men's restroom only has one stall. So if someone goes in there and decides to spend forty-five minutes in there, um, it. Creates problems, as you could imagine. So hopefully, if we can get funding from the state. Uh, from the critical infrastructure funding program, maybe we can get that funding to redo the bathrooms. Um, we'll we'll try to get that funding. It is a one-to-one match, so the city would have to come up with the other half of it. Um, but that's definitely something that I think it's worth trying to pursue. Um, if we could get new bathrooms, that would eliminate a lot of the. The troubles that we have, cause it it is and and, you know, parents.
Yeah.
Parents, I think South Pasadena. Um. People think of it as a safe little Mayberry town. And it's a cute little library, but it is a public restroom.
Yeah.
In a in a public park, so you you parents should not send their seven-year-olds into a public restroom by themselves and we don't. Encourage them to to do that, you know, so um. So it it but there's this kind of disconnect, you know. In general, I mean, we've had since school started, we've had two uh seven-year-olds dropped off on their own. Oh, my mom left, yeah, my mom left me here to. So people, you know, they think it's a safe place and it is a safe place, but it's not that safe, you know, it's not so safe that the parents should turn over the responsibility for. Keeping their kids safe.
Kathy. In terms of the the restaurants are within the building, so we have authority over them.
Hmm.
Do we have uh in our rules of conduct, anything about no bathing in the bathroom and things like that?
We do and we enforce that and people would be banned for that behavior.
I think that's that's an important issue to to have on the table that you have that rule.
We do. And then as far as the exterior goes, it's really Public Works responsibility. They don't have any regular regu- regular schedule for cleaning. I think that Public Works is, you know, they're under a a new director, not that new now, but um they are definitely. Building their team, they've made a number of staffing changes, they've created positions, new positions. They've converted positions to create different positions. Um, I think they're looking now at the possibility of um. They still have a vacancy that's kind of in a facilities oversight position. Um, so they're looking at filling that or or converting that to something. So as that team becomes more um solid. I am hoping that we can really sit down with them and say, listen. We need this outside maintenance on this regular basis and you guys have to make it happen, so um. So that's, that's something we need to work on as a city and they recognize it as well. Um, we have a contract with Land Care that does the parks maintenance. Um, I don't know when that contract is is up, but I think they will. You know, they'll be looking at these vendors and thinking about how to how to serve. Fill it, fill these needs.
For the record. Staff. Cannot intercede outside the library. Staff is not trained to nor responsible for maintenance. For uh cleaning outside the library because we are staff is responsible for the la- the interior of the library building.
Yeah, I mean, we pick up trash if we, you know, see it outside the door or whatever, but yeah, we don't, we we don't have. We we don't have the capacity to maintain the park or police the park.
Or just for for really the authority.
Right. I mean, but again, clearly if someone's in our entryway, someone's on our balcony, um, we would definitely. Be paying special attention to that.
Great. You know, I just wanted to, cause I know that there is some concern uh amongst the the public about why doesn't the library staff do this? Or why doesn't the library staff do that? And it's simply because we don't, whoever staff doesn't have the authority nor the training to do those things. So, uh, and that's why we have a police force and we do have, uh, I I believe, uh, and I want to move through this. Um, uh. Have we ever had a problem with um where where we have. The staff has reached out to the police and the police have not been able to come reasonably quickly.
Um, I would say typically they're able to come, but I mean, if we're having. A problem with a behavior that's not dangerous and they're dealing with a carjacking. Or something, we're gonna take second uh second place. So I guess often what might happen is. The person that's causing the disturbance that we need to help with has already left the premises. And you know, the police will get there, but they've already gone. Um, because we've already been dealing with them and saying you need to leave and so they've left. So, yeah, I mean, the police are here for us. They're they're there for us. They come when we need them and certainly if we called and said we have a a. In a real dangerous emergency situation, they would come and help us.
You find that um there's a deterrent uh effect of saying, look, we have to call police at this point. Does that usually work or does that?
No, it just add, it mostly agitates. See, they don't want you to call the police, so then they get mad, you're gonna call the police. We usually call, we usually step away from the desk and go to the back and call from there, so the. The person doesn't know.
Um, security cameras.
Yeah, so this is something that the community wants is for us to have um security cameras outside and we definitely want them inside. Um, so that's another thing that uh we need to work with Public Works on um and the Police Department in terms of what they're um. Basically looking at it from a citywide perspective, the Public Works doesn't want us going off. Putting in our own system that's not compatible with the system and what the police need to do their jobs, et cetera. So that's all in conversation. I've I've had. Two recent conversations with the Director of Public Works, um, and I'm trying to to move that forward. Um, I did secure the funding for it last year, so the money is there. It's just the the project. Um, and getting all the pieces.
Anything that the larger board trustees can do to support you in that effort?
Um. Well, I mean, I guess you can, you can. Direct me to convey a message to the city manager that this is really important.
Done.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I if if you wanna.
Can we agendaize that?
Yeah, I mean, yeah.
Cause we've talked about this for, cause I remember last year when you said we've got the funding for the security cameras.
Um, I think it's key and integral to whatever we've been discussing all night.
It's really important.
So, um, Sean, could we uh, could we, do we need to make a motion to agendaize that?
Well, I I'm, what what would be on the agenda? Would it just be? Cause I mean, we're, this is on the agenda, so you might be able to just make a motion now.
I'd like to propose a motion and I I've opened it before for a friendly amendment that we direct staff to uh. To notify the city that we're tired of asking and we'd like them to put the net. However, we'd like to casually, more casually and and politically say that, uh, but it's been a year that we've had these funds. Um. We don't need them to go get us the money. We've gotten them the money. We'd like them to just now put it on their calendar to install. Um, does anyone have any thoughts?
Yeah, I I don't know if this is an appropriate uh friendly amendment to that. Uh, I don't know if this is the uh the place for, but. I really think uh the exterior uh lighting needs to be really looked at.
That's the next thing on the list, so we can, I believe that's on here. Did I put that on here? Oh, maybe I didn't put it on here, I apologize.
Yeah.
Well, we can talk about that.
Do we? Pocket for that though.
No, but that's another thing that I'm hoping we can ask um from the State Library, from the Critical Infrastructure. Um. I think you recall that we put in a preliminary grant, you know, sort of a description and and the feedback that I got from the library at the time was that. These seem like good requests. Now, whether they'll have the money to fund them, I don't know, but um they 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 seemed amenable to that.
So would that be a second motion then that we encourage you to go back to them and say, take them with.
No, I don't think so. I mean, the the deadline for that application will be in March, so we'll be talking about it as we.
So now the all remove line thing then, so that the lighting would not be coming under Public Works then.
Okay, but it's just something we would, we would definitely be thinking about it as, if we're looking at cameras, we're gonna probably be thinking about what light.
Yeah, the lighting kind of goes cameras.
What what physically has to happen? Did the city appropriated twenty thousand dollars to do this for us and it's just a question of doing it?
We have to get, we have to write a a request for qualifications or a request for proposal. We have to put it out to bid. We have to, so we have, in order to write the qualifications, the request for pros or qualifications, we have to spec out the project exactly what we need. Um, so that takes some expertise that we don't have.
So the city has to do that, please?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the motion, what we're coalescing into is we are formally requesting that the city agendas within the next sixty days. Uh, preparing whatever uh you can add words is necessary. To then be able to get a contractor out here to do the installation. We talked about this briefly with about the quest last uh at our last meeting. If this were building it, you know, that at your house. We'd have it, already we'd have an architect by now, but because it's being done on city property. There are required municipal code steps that we have to go through. There's uh our city, the county, the state. Uh, and and those things have to be adhered to, but it's been a while. We'd like them to.
I I second, I second it, so let's, yeah, I second it that we.
Do we have actual words? Okay.
Does it, I mean, does that, how, so the agenda item is that you were formally requesting the city agendas?
It it's a motion because we're already on, this is, this is within the health and safety uh uh agenda item we already have, so we're gonna make a motion. That we formally request the city.
There was a timeline on installation of the government.
Yeah, give us, but within the next, we'd like within sixty days to have a firm timeline established.
Firm timeline established, okay.
For the, if for for whatever bureaucratic steps are required and the installation of. The security cameras.
Sweet, Sean, can you do a roll call?
Sure, Dean Serwin.
Yes.
Bianca Richards.
Yes.
Annie Chang Long.
Yes.
Kenneth Gross.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sounds fun when we get to some. Um. All right, great. So I think that we've come to the end of the agenda. I don't know if anyone else has any thoughts, comments, questions, concerns that they'd like to raise at this time.
Anything else you want from Shannon while we have him here?
You know, Shannon, first of all, um, today is September eighth, we're approaching September eleven. Um. I know we are very far from Manhattan or Pennsylvania or DC. Um, but I I. I was speaking with some first responders and some members of the military yesterday. Um, and they were telling some stories and and I realized that it impacts every group. Every city, no matter where you are, uh life change. And um, I'd like to thank you for your service and letting me know that we appreciate what you do. Especially what you do, being our liaison. You took this on, you weren't given this job, you took on this job. And I know you have personal reasons for it. Um, and and I'd like to commend you and acknowledge you for the work you've done and continue to do on our behalf, the city. Um. In addition to that. Uh, if you could maybe just. Summarize quickly what. What you can't do when it comes to an unhoused person who is uh in in the park. Whether they're wandering around six hours a day, seven days a week, or they're sleeping on the sidewalk. Or or what have you, cause I know that it's very frustrating. Um, and if you can quickly summarize why you can't force them into treatment.
Absolutely. First first of all, people, everybody treats it the same, we we preach that um all day, but uh. We gotta respect people's uh personal rights and their personal space and if people don't want help on certain things that. Um, society says, say, we have to kind of do it this way, there's a little regulation and there's only certain ways we can. Kind of step, we won't pull somebody over if they're just driving down the street normally, but they're violating uh. Uh. If they're violating a uh vehicle code, we we can stop them, but we can't just stop them just because, hey, we we want to. So we gotta kind of treat it the same same way here. Um, everybody has a right to use the park regardless of economic status, regardless of race, regardless of color. Regardless of anything else. I understand it's frustrating sometimes because we do see the same people, but we, there's a fine line that we have to. To walk and uh our job is not to get the city into uh um any type of legal trouble or violate anybody's rights. But I understand that the neighbors do, the neighbors do are frustrated around certain issues. Um. I can bring up one in particular where um. We're doing a lot of background work on one one subject. We're contacting the family member, we're trying to help them assist that person. Um, but it's a long journey at first, the family didn't want anything to do with that person. Now the family is like, okay, we're here to help them. So it's consistently on not only. Our part, but it's consistently on the neighbor's part too. They see something, say something, if it's bothering them, let us know so we can. Try to deal with the issue, but in a fair fair way.
Anyone else heard any thoughts or thoughts? Um.
Nobody mentioned anything about the benches and I didn't want to know, nothing was mentioned about the benches. I thought they were going to change some of the benches, et cetera.
Send me an email and all. I mean, I guess I can just mention it. Um, so the benches, that that what we would like to do with those benches is replace the two, like six-foot tables. With four smaller tables. That's another Public Works. Project that I need help.
Then we feel that that will make them less desirable to be.
It'll, it'll give, it'll just give more people the ability to use that space, because right now, if one person takes over one table, there's only one table left. If there's four tables and someone takes over one table, there's still three tables left and and they're smaller, um, and they're a little bit maybe. Designed for shorter periods of time, just based on how they're designed.
Less attractive use.
Yeah, so that's, that's another project that takes, you know, we have to go out to bid, we have to get, find out who's gonna do the installation. Um, I've looked at it with Public Works, but I have. A long list of library-related projects that I need Public Works' help with. Um, so trying to work with them on what that timeline looks like. Um, and obviously, security cameras are are high priority, so is air conditioning and um getting, you know, HVAC that's compliant. Was Cal O'Shea. Um, so there's a number of things that, you know, we're working with Public Works on, but we do still intend to do that. We have the funding to do the benches. So that should happen soon.
Maybe we could, you know, maybe we could do a a broader uh motion for us, you know, that the board of trustees. Is supporting, you know, the the library's request from the Public Works and then.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know.
Splitting hairs and then each project, I think.
Yeah, I think so too. They they know that. You you you're making a statement that I can share, you know, with the city manager and and.
What might be helpful um for our own accreditation and and future reference. Is if you could make a a list of already. Findings and and we're waiting for the ability to make them shovel-ready as the phrase goes.
Yeah.
Uh, projects, so that we're aware of what there is.
Yeah.
That'd be very helpful.
We'll do that in October.
Yeah, I'm close to public comment, yeah, thank you. Um, so uh if we could, I'd like to move on to our next agenda item.
We can do that, I'm gonna just tell Shannon access to buildings.
Um, I also have to make an announcement that um Annie Chang Long says that she had to uh leave the meeting at eight thirty. But we still have a quorum.
Thank you.
You know, Public Works Department, can you, can you imagine, yeah, that, I mean, so many. Facilities need the long public works, yeah.
Public library as their own.
That they do. Yeah, but I mean, look at, look at, there's, you know, the whole city of South Tampa, you know, behind on a lot of.
There's, it's a whole different.
And Kathy, you know, this was a really, really, really good report. Is this, is it worth it? To do any kind of uh PR? I mean, I would say it would be useful for some of this stuff to be made. To do any kind of PR? I mean, I would say it would be useful for some of this stuff to be made public for others. So that it, I mean, this is really nice and nice.
I mean, if anybody had asked, had asked me, you know, what are the rules around the wifi instead of, you know, making assumptions and. No, I mean, nobody asked me. So I don't know. I don't know. It seems like it's kind of weird. Like, what would I put on a website? Like, I don't know.
That seems like a a an issue that I think would come up to have as an FAQ on the website, what are the rules regarding wifi?
That is on, I mean, we have the we have wifi information on the website.
This summary was very good, Kathy, but thank you. It was very.
I mean, maybe Bianca, you know, you're connected to the neighborhood watch group. Maybe you can share some of that with some of the people that have an interest. Most people aren't interested, but.
Well, I sent the package, the agenda package to my neighbor.
Good.
Because it was public, yeah.
Great. Yeah, that's great.
Very much appreciated. Our public comments policy, we talked about this last time. I asked that agenda so that we could just. Get it on on point that and I appreciate that he did not overstay the three minutes. He he spoke twice, which I think was against policy, but. We we he was the only one I expected five or six people, so I'm okay with that this time. But I would like it on the record that we that we are going to adhere to the three minute policy. That if anybody comes back and says, but I thought I could talk for five. We're going to adhere to three minutes and and I didn't throw out my kind words because I thought.
I put mine on. I can buy us a little. I'll I'll buy it. We'll buy a little box that has the yellow, red, green.
That'd be great. That'd be great. So there.
Yeah, but it's helpful for the speaker to have a little heads up that I'm running out of time and and it's it's it's. Listed in the agenda instructions every month, so it's.
We only had one tonight, but if we had had five, it would be very important to keep people on time. So I don't know that we're going to ever have. Yeah, but you never know. I mean, it is a common form of an issue and and maybe we'll be doing, you know, once we get. Into the construction issue, we might have people coming who want to discuss what we care.
We might have to, if we really are starting to get a lot of public comment, I know you guys don't like this, but we might have to go to council chambers. Because it's really awkward to have public comment in this room.
But we'll 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 evaluate that on. Item seven, summer twenty twenty two outcome survey results. Very, again, thank you for providing all this information. Great for us to be able to have it at our fingertips. Is there any highlights that you wanted to point out, Kathy?
I just wanted you to have an opportunity to see all the really positive comments. I was really excited to see. You know, seventy one people took the time to actually make a a comment and they're all positive. Also notably, none of them say I'm afraid to come to the library because it's so scary, you know. So we got a lot of that in the. Strategic planning survey, but then these are people who literally use the library all summer long with their little kids. And that was not a big concern for them. So that kind of is telling, I think.
I think questions five and six are really important. You know, very few people said they disagreed that there's a big place in activities and. Almost no one said they weren't looking forward to coming again. So I think that that's important. I'll I'll reread all these comments, but again, yeah, I mean, they really. It it's nice to know that it is really the outlier that has had an issue. And I appreciate your commentary. Earlier about the fact that we've never had an actual injury, not would we will never have one. But it it is not that the library is an unsafe place. As you said, it it's it's unfortunately. The world we live in, and honestly, I don't think it's ever, the world has ever been an entirely safe place. I think it's a much safer place now than it was at times best, so.
Seeing all those staff interact with home people and people with issues, I've seen Kathy outside with, you know, certain individuals. They they all very respectful, listen to everything they say and they're considering freedom. You know, with with the free deal and that.
It's not your job, but you do it. And so I guess it is part of your job technically because you're dealing with anyone who walks in the door and walks up to the door. Like I said, talks to, we we greatly appreciate the job that you do and that you send.
Yeah, it was interesting. The strategic planning, there did seem to be this in the survey, sort of this. Conflation of homelessness and safety. And I didn't, I'm not really a big fan of that. There's definitely a relationship between mental illness and safety. And yes, many homeless people are suffering mental, but many homeless people are just fine, you know. And and so a lot of people are really conflating these two things. And I think Olivia, I I don't know if I can even say what she said. She said it so well. She said. It's our job, just like Shannon said, to educate people about. And and that's what we try to do, you know, when we have people coming to us and complaining about someone who's, you know. Maybe talking quietly to themselves or or doing something that's a little bit out of the ordinary, but not against the rules and really not bothering anyone, you know. We have to educate the person that's complaining. So it's that's one of our jobs too, and and I think we can probably all use some professional development around that. So that's something we'll be looking at, but yeah.
Thank you again. I do want to move us on, you know, my my like in short meeting, library strategic planning update.
Yeah, so. Yeah, you could, well, if you want to talk about it, let me let me go over a little overview and if Bianca wants to then talk about the public open house. So the open house, we had nineteen people. They weren't all people that I knew. Like, I thought it might be, you know, all the usual suspects, but there were some people there that came because they, you know. Must have participated in the survey and they got the invitation or we had a tab, a teen advisory board person come. Yeah, so so it was nice. It was nice to see people that came just because they were interested. So that the format of that was that they shared some of the survey results, some of the kind of environmental scan stuff, and then they kind of sought. More input from that group. On Wednesday morning, we had a four hour session with staff. Same thing. We went through a review of the kind of the data analysis and then we went through a whole bunch of exercises to kind of identify. If you remember, there there's there kind of their methodology is to look at the challenges in the community and the strengths in the community. And what the library's role is related to those. So we went through some exercises to look at the library's role. We went through an exercise to look at the library's readiness to take on those roles, you know, like. Uh, do we have, is the facility adequate for that particular role? Is the staffing adequate for that role? Is this adequate for that role? So those are really great exercises. And then we also did some brainstorming of specific goals. And categorize them in terms of. Green, yellow, and red, like what's most important, what's middle important, what's least important or not least, but last. And then we all got to kind of vote on those. So it was really, really productive and we came away that that really generated a whole lot of meat. For what will be the strategic plan. And then we also did mission statement brainstorming. So each of the small groups, I think there were five small groups. Wrote, you know, we did some exercises and then wrote mission statements. So so it was great. It was really, really great staff session. And then the advisory committee met that afternoon. Sally can talk about that when I get to the end of my little summary. Because she's on the advisory committee, but I'm told that it was a really good discussion and that it was a lot of great feedback and. It it was complimentary to the kinds of feedback that the staff had come up with, so that was good. Then this morning, Barb and Mate and I spent three hours with the consultants looking at both the roles that the staff came up with. The roles that the community advisory committee came up with and trying to kind of create. Kind of refining that to come up with sort of the the main kind of themes that have come out of this. So then you'll have the themes with sort of. The summary of what that theme is and all of the goals, maybe and actions that go with that theme. So that was really productive too. So in terms of what's next, the Barry Dunn will present to the board on the thirteenth in October, in October at your meeting. And hopefully have some mission statements for for you to look at and consider.
Will not be here for that meeting. I was in Hawaii for.
Okay, we'll have to get you connected at some different time. That's fine. We'll figure it out. I I will be sending the board the the PowerPoint that they presented so that you could look through that. I think it'll be interesting even without any commentary, but I'll send you that along with whatever summary, you know. I haven't really figured out. We've just been going nonstop since since Tuesday, so I haven't had a chance to really sit down and draft anything, but I'll definitely send you the PowerPoint. I'm going to update our strategic planning webpage so that we can post that PowerPoint there and maybe put some more information there. Barry Dunn, again, will be working with the mission statement material and trying to craft some possibilities for us that we can then review. And they're going to go back now with all these roles, goals, actions, performance measures and and try to put that all together. To bring it back for us to refine that further. So it was really positive couple of days with them onsite, really, really good. And I don't know, Bianca, if you want to talk about the public.
Well, yeah, and I and I really think that the consultants, they do a great job. Engaging with the community and and every time, anytime somebody had an answer, they were, they listened and then they. Complimented the person. So I I love their. Yeah, and I and I like it that they kind of broke up in things into themes, like the facility. And expanding the programs, technology. So that's kind of helpful. And it was, I thought the. The public input was was great. And one thing that really kind of stuck in my head when they said is that we really should try to capitalize on the uniqueness. And they kept calling it campus. And I thought, that's, you know, sometimes we don't, we forget about that, that we. This is a unique sort of a location. And so that was kind of my, and then of course, some of the takeaways were. The lighting was in and out, that people commented about the furniture. And then there was that one very good comment about that the person was hoping that it was going to be more intergenerational experiences. I thought that was. And then and then a couple of people did talk about there are some barriers that do exist to access library services. So I thought some really good points were, you know.
The biggest barrier to act by far to accessing library services is lack of personal time. Which is, you know, your first instinct is like, well, what can I do about that? But they were, the consultants were like, you can do a lot about that. Is it, is it? You know, do you put out hold lockers to make it more convenient for people to pick up at their weird time that works for them? So, you know, something that off kind of your first instinct is to say, well, I can't help if it's if they can't use the library because they don't have time. How's, how can I help with that? But but they have, they really look at things in an interesting way.
Yeah, well, you know, and living so close to the library and, you know, the book drops, the book drops twenty four hours. Really, you know, oh, oh, yeah, people drive by and learn material at one in the morning, midnight.
Do we have a list of our entire catalog?
Yeah, the catalog. I mean, yeah, the catalog is catalog. It's a it's a database, like a relational database, so it has the.
We know, so people know if we have a book and if they can contract it out. Yeah, I I know my wife does that all the time, so I guess.
Sally, do you want to say anything about the community advisory committee?
See all these groups I've been. Community advisory was an interesting group that was.
Yeah, Chris Chandler Vase from Instructional Services.
Superintendent and we have Lori Wheeler from the Chamber of Farmers and had a high school student. Had some some young people, yeah, I never knew, met them, heard of them. And there was a retired librarian. There was a gentleman who said he was a dad and a writer and an actor.
No, he did a one on one interview, stakeholder interview.
Well, because I'm thinking about the, you know, the big picture with what we're going to do as far as raising capital funds. The main thing is that the sensible plant needs, you know, addressing. And we've been talking about this public works project, but I mean, that's exactly, you know, where we could go with this twenty first century to raise capital funds. For the sensible plant and do that. But I remember the first thing they were talking about was the response rate.
They hear that? Oh, yeah, over four hundred. They have never seen.
I think they told us if they had ninety, they'd be happy.
Yeah, they were blown away.
Several years that they've got about a hundred different projects they worked with. They've never seen so much response. And possibly because of the outreach, you know, when you did the bookmark, that, but still, I think, and people love. Love the collection. That, you know, I mean, what you have here, I mean, this one older gentleman that you are. On top of everything that, you know, coming down the pipe and, you know, the the list of new books. That you're on order or we have it.
People don't know how how that that's an art and that the staff put a ton of time into building the collection. Right, so you have to choose. We can't buy everything, right? And so, yeah, a lot of effort goes into that and the staff take a lot of pride, you know. If it's not on the shelf the day it's published, you know, Barb's upset.
Well, you know, I've heard South Pasadena loves their library.
Thank you, Sally. So that's all that I have on strategic planning, but definitely October will be a good opportunity for the board to kind of. Get brought into the loop and make some help weigh in on some decisions and in the meantime, I will send out some information. So that you can see something about that. Yeah, we'll have to figure out, well, you know, we'll send an email or something.
And so graduation.
Now, we'll we'll get you before you go back to your combo.
You've been good at logging in even in your car.
Yeah, actually, I might be able to.
It was amazing how you did it so when you did it for her.
Yeah.
He logged into our meeting.
That's what is wonderful. All right, you were great. Say, Kathy, the library operations update for us.
I do. I'm going to try to keep it short because I know that it's late. Yep. So as far as the Carlisle bequest. Last night at city council, they adopted a resolution to concur with your acceptance of the bequest and to have an account created. To put the funds in. So that's done. I'm assuming next, yeah, exactly. I mean, it was, it was a no brainer, but still. I think the next step is, you know, checking in with the city attorney to see what's next and blah, 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 but. It's been accepted and we're good to go. So that's great. I wanted to give you staffing update. We made an offer to a full time adult services, digital services librarian. And she's going to start on the twenty sixth and I have her little bio here. Alexis Mendoza is her name. She graduated from UCLA. That's where she got her MLIS. And she focused there on website design and user experience. She has a BA from Cal Poly Pomona in gender, ethnic, and multicultural studies. She's coming to us from Glendora Public Library where she's a librarian too. And she's done a lot with kind of database management and digitization. And she's just really dynamic and personable and vibrant. So I think she's going to be a really nice fit for us. And we're super excited. Yeah, super excited about that. We just posted our clerk to a part time clerk to vacancy today. So that's an internal promotional opportunity. So hopefully we'll get that filled quickly. We just submitted a requisition to fill our aid vacancy. And theoretically, we might have another aid vacancy if an aide gets promoted to that clerk position, but it could also be clerk one that gets promoted to clerk two. And then finally, the big one is the new support services librarian that was funded this fiscal year. We need to finish kind of working through some of the kinks with HR about how to post that position. Because it's so different from our typical librarian positions, but we have to use the librarian job description. So we're trying to work through some of that and try to trying to get a piece of that job description that's better describes what the work is so that we can post that. So that's hopefully mid month is our goal to get that going. Quick update on programs, you know, one city, one story is definitely the focus in the coming. In the coming month. Um quick update on programs, you know, One City One Story is definitely the focus in the coming, in the coming month and a half, two months. Um voting is happening through the tenth and then the winning book will be announced on the nineteenth. Um then we have a program on October fourth with the author, um Jana Ireland. She's the author of a beautiful coffee table book called Regarding Paul R. Williams, A Photographer's View. He's an African American, was. African American um famous architect. Um so that should be really great program, both visual, you know, visually stimulating, but also real interesting. We have a partnership with Spark to do a, an author talk with the musician Leland Sclare. Um so that's on October twelfth, that should be fun. Then we have um a natural indigo dyeing uh event that we're doing in partnership with the community garden. So um we'll do that with them on October sixteenth. And finally, the book discussion that will go with the book that was selected is October twenty sixth, but that's all on the website. Um. I wanted to tell you about the city open house. I don't think I brought the flyer, but the city, you know how they usually do. Like the police, the public safety open house, and then there's the car show. This year, they're doing an all-city open house. Um we're gonna close mission between um Fair Oaks and Fremont and also mound like in front of the fire station. And so all police stuff will be out there, all the fire stuff will be out there, every department will be out there, the first floor city hall will be open. Um there'll be bouncy houses, um all kinds of DJ, it's gonna be a big citywide thing. Um hopefully lots of people will come out, the library is super excited, we're gonna have a really great um craft activity, we're gonna have some really fun giveaways. And hopefully be able to connect with a lot of people and hopefully have our uh special tax frequently asked questions. Thing ready to go so that we can be having that at that booth. So that's October second, Sunday, so keep an eye out for that. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, which I'm sure Diana would mention if she were here, but she's not, so I'll do it for you, is that the city has launched um a mobile app. Um which is really fantastic. Um so I can send you guys an email, yeah, Diana can show you. But basically, it's a, you know, you can put in, if you see a pothole, you can put it in and put in the. It'll give you the coordinates and you put in a picture and then tell them to fix the pothole, or if you need something, you navigate to it and it sends you to where you need to go. And it also has your voting district, so you can look at what, you know, who's, who are, you know, where, what, what district am I in?
Confusing between the school district and.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's really nice and I recommend everybody download it. It's easy to find when you type in South Pasadena and you're in either Android or. Or the Apple Store, it's either our app or that app. So there's only two. That's all I've got.
So thank you. That was uh, that was quick and informative. Uh item nine, board president communications. Uh, thank you everyone for the work we did tonight. I think that it was important to get all this on record. Uh we learned, I I learned some stuff. Uh it's good to know that uh we have those resources. And again, thank you so much to you and staff for putting together that that report is, like I said, it is so well written that it's something that we can. Easily and quickly point people to.
Just facts, you know, like, just.
Yeah.
A lot of misinformation, you know.
With facts these days.
Yeah.
Good to see them completely state. Uh and with that, I I will pass it up. I will miss being in uh in person with you, but thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, look into it.
I'll see if I can make it ever. And move on to uh board member communication items and uh Bianca.
Yeah, I've got the city council meeting last night and uh to support, you know, the consent item, so that was good. And also uh the library, you know, the mayor highlights a different uh department and the library was highlighted last.
Which I think, and I think I sent it to you, but I keep using the wrong email, group email address for you guys. I probably sent it to the wrong address.
Oh, no.
I I'll resend it. I don't know what's wrong with me. I keep doing it. I I, every time I'm like, you didn't get it?
Yeah, mayor, yeah.
I'll re. Yeah, I'm sorry. I I tried to send it to you, but I'm sure I sent it to the wrong.
And then I just, uh everything else that Kathy said, I was gonna say, so, yeah.
Outstanding, Kathy. Um I think we covered a lot of ground of important stuff. We always cover important stuff, but there's such wide implications. And stuff, everything just keep following up on.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Great, well, thank you. Uh council liaison communication is not here. Friends of the library representative.
Hey, I have a report from Ellen. Um just to quickly go through a lot of these. Um the discussion of deciding whether to uh fix it or sell it, still going on. Uh they're developing our records retention uh and instruction team for our records.
Well, that's good.
Uh we're working with Jericho Road um to update the website. Um they'll work with us to incorporate internet where our documents will live. You know, we've been talking about this. This is at the retreat uh that took place. Uh the mission statement was reviewed or remains the same, bylaws were reviewed. Some changes were adopted and as well as policies. There will be a special program on B. Uh they are going to sponsor that October nineteenth in the community room.
You said bees?
Bee, yeah, bee, yeah, bee, yeah. Um they're co-sponsoring it with uh South Pasadena Beautiful. And I know our our bookstore um chair is also on the board of uh South Pasadena Beautiful. So that's how that connection was was made. Um the board discussed uh board development with Jericho Road. But we we already have a project with them now, so that can be down the road. Uh the restoration concert, the season is opening September eighteen. Uh featuring Almanova and the concert series are full available for a hundred and thirty six dollars for eight concerts.
Free, free, fair first.
No, let's see, I think it might be one of them. Uh the newsletter went out September, you know about that. Uh membership and donations continue to come out, come, come in, and uh we ask you to become a supporter of the friends. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That is a very comprehensive and and uh swift support. Uh trustee liaison to the friends.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I didn't go to the meeting.
Yeah, you weren't at the retreat, right?
I wasn't at the, right, I've nothing to report. I will be, I am going to, we have a meeting next week, don't we? You're going to uh, the meeting next week. Yeah, I think, I guess, yeah.
Does the library director have any further comments?
I have nothing else.
Well, if that's that, unless anyone has any thoughts they'd like to share at eight fifty seven, sorry, along this meeting.
Well, needed to have it.
Uh I let us know, John, you let us know when we're off. John?
It was so long ago.
He has to walk to the other room.
Okay.